Yeah, pleasure to lead you.
My pleasure to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, even the physical with liberty and justice for all.
Hold that one too many times. Charlie, can you vote?
So, the purpose for the meeting today was to review the warrants since even though I think it's long odds we're going to meet on June 15th for the annual town meeting, that we need to prepare as if we're going to. So that means getting the warrant to press next week with a note that in essence says everything is subject to change, which I'm hoping people understand why. But I wanted to make sure that the board reviewed the warrant one more time before it went to press in case they had any questions or there were articles that could be deleted. I did get a note, for instance, from Steve Hayward about a couple of his highway articles. So, I don't know if you want me to start simply going through the warrant. I will say the special town meeting, right now we have nothing. So unless articles show up in the next couple of days for some reason, and Sandy's monitoring that also, we won't have a separate special town meeting on the 15th or whatever date we end up meeting. The first couple, first articles always is the reports on the town officials and committees. The second article is the wage and personnel by law recommendations. Wage and personnel has been meeting during the last couple of months. I think there are, there will be matters that they're going to essentially say, we may well bring a recommendation in. There's the grading of the lieutenant position for the police department. There's possible regrading for the animal control officer. There's a possible regrading for the director of building maintenance. And what they're doing is leaving themselves some leeway to bring those regrades to town meeting at the annual town meeting. Gordon, I don't know, were you expecting to do the disciplinary or what do you want to do with that?
If I can rewrite it in time, if I can find, I told Melinda I would try to get it done.
Okay, so we've still got another week. So, Article 3 is a finance committee article. As far as I know, the amounts should be exactly the same from fiscal '20 to fiscal '21. We'll, I'll confirm that with the finance committee on Monday for the salaries for the elected officials. The operating budget, they're pretty much done on at least a draft of the budget. Again, there'll be a big asterisk saying that all this is subject to change. We don't know what the state aid numbers are going to look like. We'll have a better sense whether it's in the middle of June or whatever date we have for the annual town meeting, where our financial situation is and what budget can be recommended by the finance committee. But they'll make recommendations based on the information they have at this point. Article 5 is a revolving, list of revolving funds. Article 6 is the normal article we have for the reserve fund every year, 75, to cover general fund expenses, 50,000 for the water department. Articles 7 through 13 are the articles to settle the union contracts. We have no settlements at right, right now. I don't know that we would have any settlements by the June 15th date. If we do, we'll have them in there. If not, they'll be passed over. Obviously, again, with the financial situation.
Barbara just texted said that you're echoing and gargling in the...
I'm gargling. I mean, we are taping this for cable. So if, even if our Zoom meeting is getting garbled, we do have, we will be taping this. You will be able to see the full meeting once it's posted on the Area 58 YouTube channel. So my apologies about the audio quality. Let's see, A1, okay, so we go into the appropriation articles. First one is the normal extension service article. Article A2 is the Chapter 90 article. That's the right amount. The legislature has not passed the bonding measure yet, so we don't have a chapter fill in. If we, if they have not passed it when, whatever date that we have town meeting, then we'll have to pass over it. Article 3 is the annual article we have for 150,000 for maintenance of town roads. Article 4, I am, Steve Hayward wrote to me this morning saying he does want that taken out. So unless the board says otherwise, that's what I'm doing. Same with Article 5, which both of those articles were large sums of money for street repairs. We would have needed to bond and probably debt exclude. We don't have any debt exclusion questions on ballot at this point, and Steve has taken those, has asked to take those articles off. Article 6 is for the 150,000 for a backhoe. And these are all going to still subject to finance committee recommendation at town meeting. A7 is for a copier for the council on aging. Article 8 is 600,000 for a fire engine for the fire department. Article 9 is $100,000 for two marked police vehicles and associated equipment. Article 10 is for radio systems at the police department for the officers and the vehicles. Article 11, and I don't know if the, you know, I know the board has talked a little bit with the police chief about this, it's still on there, is the motorcycle. He had been leasing the motorcycle and using gift account money. He's indicated at various times to the finance committee that either he would like to buy it outright or would like to continue paying the lease payments out of the expense line item. I know the board's talking about this. I know it's a police chief's article. I didn't know if the board wanted to do anything with that article or say anything concerning at this point.
Did the finance committee make a recommendation on that one? Sandy?
They did not recommend it. The police chief said that he believes he will have gift account money that will be able to pay the lease, so he will lease it for one more year and try to purchase it next year. So...
Okay. What about the wear and tear on the machine?
He felt it would not be significant, the wear and tear, because it only gets used three months out of the year, I think he said, or this, because of the weather and everything, it's not used as much as like patrol vehicle. So, that was going to be one of his comments at the finance committee.
Thank you.
Sandy, do you know how much is in the gift account?
I do not, but he said he's been getting gift money from Walmart.
Okay.
And he said another business that he felt he'd be able to cover.
Okay. So Article A12 is appropriation for four new patrol rifles for the police department?
That article's going to be included.
Okay, so I, okay, I'll link, I'll contact the police chief to make sure, get something confirmation. Article 13, 5,000 for bullet resistant vests for the department. Article 14, and I'd like the board to leave that on there. It's from the housing authority. I'm still trying to figure out, how to put this, the finances on this. Basically what had happened was we had an employee who worked for the housing authority and for the town who, both units, the housing authority and the town, contributed money to that employee's retirement accrual at the Plymouth County Retirement System. It may be that the retirement system charged the housing authority the full amount rather than charging us for part of the amount for several years. I've talked to John McKeown, who's the housing authority director. I've talked to staff at Plymouth County, and it's still, I'm not saying it didn't happen, but there's not enough backup yet for me to say, yes, here's the exact amount that the town should pay to the housing authority. Plymouth County will not reimburse the housing authority and then charge us. As far as they're concerned, their whole, any interactions between the housing authority and the town. So this is an article that would send money from the town to the housing authority, in essence, to cover what they had to, what the, they were assessed due to having to pay for their full retirement for the employee. So I'm asking, I mean, the housing authorities asked for it, I'm just going to leave it on here, but in between now and when we have town meeting, I'll try and come up with an answer is the, that either is, this is the right amount, or it's a different amount. Article 15 is for the recertification. This is an annual article for the assessors. They appropriate one-third of the money each year for the triennial recertification. Article 16 is 36,000 to support a part-time school resource officer for the Silver Lake Middle School. I know, I believe the finance committee did not recommend this back on Monday night. It is an article from the Silver Lake Regional School Committee. I don't know if the board wanted to talk about it at all tonight, or tonight, this morning, or just will, or not.
Did they give a reason why they denied it?
So the finance committee's position is, it should be within, should be within Silver Lake's budget, but if we put it inside Silver Lake's budget, then the cost of the budget would go up, and then that, if we did it like that, then we'd have to put the full-time police officer that's at the high school into the budget as well. So you would see the budget grow by 150,000 dollars for those two positions, because currently right now, Plimpton's paying a portion to cover...
Five or 10 hours a week?
Something like that, yeah. And then we were looking for Halifax to cover the 15 hours. So it worked out that it would be the same cost share that we have in the assessment, but Kingston's police officer at the high school is not within Silver Lake's budget, it's within Kingston's budget. When we had the meeting last year, everyone said that the need was real, and we think the officer should be at the middle school. The question was whether or not, how to fund it. So I think we're paying what we would pay through the assessment process. If everything went into the budget, it would actually cost more than 36 to Halifax.
Just to be clear, what we're talking about is just for the middle school, and it would only be Halifax and Plimpton participating in that particular officer.
Paying for that one, where Kingston's paying for the...
Yeah, I said the system, just my financial. Kingston's paying for the, for the high school.
Yeah, and I think the finance committee's position is, if it's important, and this is what other regional school districts do, it's in their budgets. So if it's a priority and we have a limited amount of money, we have to make a choice. We either spend, you know, put it in the budget for Silver Lake, Silver Lake School Committee can take a look at it, and then they'll have some choices to make. If the resources, resource officers are more important than other expenditures for the school, they'll make, you know, they'll keep the resource officers in and leave something else out, or the other way around. Or if they think everything's important, they'll put the whole thing in there, both for the full-time officer and the, and for the high school and this part-time office for the middle school. But as they talked about on Monday, I think they were mentioning, was it the Rochester School District, I think, as an example, which is a multi-town school district? Because I think it's the old Rochester Regional School District, not just Rochester. I think that's the direction they would want to see this in. So again, I don't necessarily, I don't think that they're disputing whether there's a need for it or not. However, they feel that if it's going to be paid, it should be paid by all three towns similarly for the Kingston officer, and if there's a need, it should be part of the regional school budget, not a separate article. This just leaves the possibility that at other times, we're going to get requests for funding for Silver Lake outside the regular district budget for other things. I mean, if it's Silver Lake, it should be in the budgets, I think the finance committee's position on this.
Just on the old Rochester, they, they actually do it the way that we were recommending it outside the budget. So...
I think philosophically, from the very beginning, the first time I heard about this at a meeting we had with the, I think it was the joint union committee, I believe.
We had a big, yeah.
Yeah. I was not in favor of the towns going at it separately. I personally agree that it's that important, and I do believe it is. I think the whole thing should be in the budget, and I agree. I think it opens the door for other things, and the school budget is much more out of control as it is in my personal opinion. If this is important, let's put it in the budget. If we have to make sacrifices in other areas, we make sacrifices in other areas, meaning the school committee. I'm personally in favor of the finance committee's position on this.
Thank you. So that's on the warrant. Next article, A17, is petition article for 20,000 to cover the cost of wages for a truck inspection program. This is primarily because of the situation in Walnut Street, but obviously it could be used elsewhere. I, having, I know the police chief has talked to the petitioner for the article, and I know that the board, I think is, I think we had that discussion earlier. Maybe it was the finance committee? Yeah, the finance committee met with the petitioner during one of the Zoom meetings. And I think they came to the conclusion, which is why I put this in here, that it may be more appropriate simply to put in, if the town wants to spend additional money on traffic enforcement, that there be a separate article for the same amount of money for traffic enforcement. It won't be as technically attached to truck enforcement on Walnut Street. But I know, you know, there are complaints about speeding trucks there, but there's complaints about speeding pretty much across town. And so if the town voters want to appropriate additional money, this would be a way of doing so. So the petition article, I can't take off the warrant. Once we've got a petition article, it's there. But if the board wanted to, it could place this alternative article on the warrant also. So I didn't know what the board's thoughts were.
They're both basically asking for the same thing. 20,000 dollars to cover the cost of wages and expenses, but one specifies.
I guess I would make the same sort of argument. If you think it should be done, then it should be in the police budget, not in an article.
That's, that was kind of my point. You're paying wages out of a one-time source of free cash. It shouldn't be, if it was going to go through to pay police wages, I would rather see it go through as a raisin appropriating. Right now, we're really limiting on raisin appropriates, so I have just gone in favor of doing a wage article out of free cash.
I'm in agreement with that too, and I agree. If enforcement is the issue, then it should be included and argued in the police budget. I mean, this is a petition article, so it gets heard. Let it stand or fall on town meeting floor.
And also, what I, if the board would be okay, I'll contact Mr. Sprague and also the police chief and indicate to Mr. Sprague that when, another alternative would be that when we get to the police department line item for wages in the Article 4, that he get up and make a motion to increase it by 20,000. That would cover the additional costs, and if, you know, there's town meeting consensus that we should be spending money there, then they'll have that opportunity to discuss that.
Again, that's not a one-time deal.
Right.
That's going to continue here after the year.
Right.
Just to be clear for everybody.
But, but this would be at overtime cost, right? This isn't anything other than...
Yes.
That was, and although they have a traffic enforcement grant, it's not close to 20,000, but they do have a traffic enforcement grant that they got this year. Possibly they can apply to that again next year. And would they be able to up their traffic enforcement within their budget is, is another good question for the chief.
So what I'm going to do is take out this alternate, A17, with the board's permission.
Do you want to put an asterisk on the Article 4? You know how we do the, the footnotes at the bottom?
That this might come up?
That it, that the police chief's approved budget is X, that the wages budget is X with the 20,000 down below.
No, because I think people can, the townspeople at town meeting can always move to make a change on those line items.
Okay.
So I'm taking the alternate out. A18 is a petition article for paving all, or grading all unpaid roads in Halifax, including all private roads and unacceptable roads. I know that Steve was out with a contractor getting that work done in the last few weeks. We got some satisfactory compliments from residents on those roads. Again, this is a petition article, you know, talk to Steve, if he can, he can tell me, for instance, how much money he spent, and so if the petitioners want, again, to come to town meeting and ask, in essence, that money be set aside for future work, then they'll be able to do that, and we'll have an amount. But I can ask Steve how much money was spent on the project that was done this spring. So we'll have an amount for the article. The 19 is for, on Pasture Lane, this is an unacceptable road. We obviously have had a number of problems. It's one of these situations where the town has a restriction on one of the, the last of the lots to be developed, and as with other roads, the, what's happened is that the developer says, well, I'll walk away. The value to me in terms of making a profit on that one lot is less than the remaining road work that needs to be done there. The estimate, last I saw, was about 160,000 dollars worth of road work had been done in Pasture Lane. It's in this order. There's another article later on in the warrant to accept Pasture Lane. We would not be able to spend this money unless it was a town road. The, I don't have a petition article or anything like that, it's simply because we've had residents come before the planning board and with other town officials and say, what are you going to do for, you know, this, you can't let this sit forever. And so one remedy, as expensive as it is, is to accept the road, spend the money necessary to improve the road, and then deal legally with the developer. I know that the planning board has continued working with town council on this issue. I put the article in there to make sure that the board was aware of the situation, if they wanted to, they could put the article on. If they don't, then we'll leave it off.
I think we're going one step ahead of ourselves, aren't we? If we're going to appropriate 160,000 dollars before the road's even accepted, what happens if the road's not accepted? The money goes back in the general fund?
So if we don't, so if we appropriated the money, it would stay in a separate article until and if the money was taken out or, or used. So we do, and we have the, we have another article on the warrant to accept Pasture Lane. I would think to, you know, I would talk to the town moderator and say, Dennis, if this, if the, this, because it will do the lottery for the articles, if this one comes up before the acceptance, we should automatically go to the acceptance article first, see if the town wants to accept the road, and then come back to this article, if this article was pulled first from the fishbowl.
I think this is more involved than how it appears on the surface. Who currently, does the developer currently own the last lot, or was the last lot sold to someone else?
He sold it to someone else.
At what I understand to be a considerably reduced price.
Yes.
With the, well, at least a suggestion that it would be that person's responsibility to do what that person needed to do to get his permit. I don't know that the town should be picking this up immediately. I'm not particularly enthused with that possibility. I think whoever purchased it should probably be responsible for this as part of the understanding of, you know, the bond not having been released, or I would not be in favor of spending 160,000 dollars.
Does the board want to take the article off the warrant?
Who proposed it?
I wrote it simply to make sure we had this conversation, because we've had residents from the street come before the planning board, come before town officials and say, we've got this problem, what are you doing to solve it? You're the ones who, in essence, who caused this problem. You made a decision to have the lot set aside and use that as collateral to force the developer to bring the road up to standards. The developer has said, I'm walking. I'm not going to do this, because the profit on this last lot is insufficient to cover the cost of the road. So, but the residents from Pasture Lane are coming to the town and saying, okay, you caused this to happen, what are you going to do to fix the problem?
Yeah, and unfortunately, this has been a trend in the planning board. This isn't the first time we've had this, and we need to have a discussion with the planning board too about future developments and how, how we take care of that. Holding lots clearly has not worked out for us. All things considered, and in this particular financial environment, I understand the frustration of the residents on the road, but I don't see that this is the year for the town to be doing this. I personally would move that we remove this if you need a...
Yeah, I would like to, just have it on the record.
If you need a motion.
I understand that, your, your point. I just think if, if we put it on the warrant, at least the other people in town know that there's an issue. Right now, not everyone knows that there's an issue. So I think if you leave it on the warrant, you could say, you could have that the board of selectmen doesn't recommend spending the money, but we wanted to bring the issue to the townspeople's attention. I think that would make sense.
I'm going to let my motion stand.
Okay.
It doesn't fly, it doesn't fly. I don't know that we need to bring that stress.
I would rather it remain.
So there's no second, so it's...
So do you want me to...
You did second it? No, I moved it. No, but did somebody second? No, okay.
So do you, do you want me to make a motion that we put in the warrant that the board of selectmen doesn't recommend?
I just let it remain. The finance committee recommend?
The finance committee, I don't think, has made a recommendation. Sandy?
Not yet, no.
I have to agree with Gordon, leave it, leave it remain on the board.
Okay. So my intention now is I'm leaving this on the warrant.
That's perfect.
Yeah, okay. Am I, is it okay, I mean, I need to put somebody as the proposer, is it okay for me to put the board of selectmen? I mean, when we get to that, you can say, we put this on the warrant for discussion purposes, we're not necessarily endorsing it.
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, okay, well, I did...
Well, I mean, you know, I...
We've done it, that's fine, okay. Take 20 off on the street lights. I don't have, given everything that's happening right now, as much as it may make financial sense long-term, I don't have the ability to get the work done to make that happen. I know that Dick Steele took 21 off. 22 is a duplicate, there's an article later on about repairing Pope's Tavern roof. Article 23 is another situation where we had residents complain about the trash that was piling up at the boat ramp on Route 58 and the fishing area that's located between the southern end of White Island Road and just past the southern end of the ponds. I don't have any money for that. I don't think there's any recommendation certainly from the highway surveyor or the police department or anybody else that we have cans or anything like that. The only other way then would be to send people out there at over, well, I would assume at overtime since we're spending additional money on this, either that or get part-time help to go out there on a regular basis to pick up the litter at those two locations.
Charlie, doesn't the state own the ramp?
We own it.
Since when? Thought we, we had...
So the only thing the state...
Late, but I thought, I thought the ramp was the state...
The state gave us the money, not gave us money, they built it. But they said, now you maintain that area as part of this deal. You want the money, you want the ramp rebuilt, which we did, then you're going to maintain it. So for instance, everything from trash pickup to bringing in the dock and putting it back out every six months.
Then, well, maybe, maybe I'm wrong, but then when we tried to ban boats from going on the ramp to keep them off, wasn't it covered because it was a state entity and we couldn't do that?
Right. If we're, what, if we're going to open the ramp, it has to be open to everybody from the Commonwealth. If we're going to close it, I think we need to have some serious discussions with the state, because they put, they may come back to us and say, well, wait a minute, we spent, I don't know, was it a couple hundred thousand dollars on this, of Massachusetts money? So I guess it goes back to my question is, it doesn't, you know, we're not obligated to go out there and send people out there to pick up the trash. People who are there, who use those facilities, have the obligation of taking the trash home with them or wherever, once they leave. I mean, you know, you really shouldn't be leaving anything behind. The problem simply, obviously, is some people disagree with that. People, there are people who feel that it's, it's certainly okay to litter and leave their trash there, which causes then the nuisance... trash there, which causes then the nuisance complaints from residents who go by there or also use it. The only solution I can see about that is to send people out there to pick up the litter. If, again, you know, again, we're in a financial bind here, it's probably not the highest priority, but, and if there's no interest in doing this, then we should just simply take the article off the warrant.
So I guess, like, what, what happens with the trash that's over at Hops?
We have cans there, and they get picked up on a regular basis under a contract with Waste Management.
How much more would it be to put barrels at the other two locations?
Well, I don't know, but I can find out. The problem is that the people will go there and dump. In essence, they'll use those trash cans as their personal dumping ground. It's the reason why our dumpster here is locked. We had too many people deciding, hey, I'm not going to pay anything, I'm going to go there. Sandy?
So we did at one time, have barrels there, and it became such an issue, such a dumping issue, that they took them away. So we had, we had that at one point, we decided that we had to take them away because people were dumping, they were home alone all the time, and it became a valid issue, right? Spoke with recycling, she brought me out to get it on one of the, she also said that the dumpster at the school is about $6,000 cost, so we give an additional $6,000 to have that dumpster there to be picked up.
Or even cans would probably be smaller, but be, but it, it would be a material amount of money, yeah.
Right. And, and it would become a dumping ground for people. So the suggestion was not to put anything there, maybe aside, but says, please take your trash with you.
That's an assumption that everybody knows how to read.
Yeah, that's true. That is true.
Maybe add some more money to the police budget for enforcement of...
What's the board's pleasure?
I, I, right now, I, my, my gut feeling is to take it off. We, we have, it, it, it's an important issue, trash on the roads, unfortunately, that's, I think is never ending, it's like speed, speed signs on the highway. People see them, they don't avail them. So what are you going to do?
I, I think we take it off.
Do you need a motion to remove it?
I, I'd like it on the record, yeah, please.
Take a motion, I, I'd make a motion to remove it.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sandy, for the next article, which is for the crosswalk control devices at the various locations, did Steve provide an amount?
So what they were looking for, they decided, I believe it was $3,000 each hour.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to put...
They were going to do a lot of us.
I'll put the Traffic Safety Committee in.
But wasn't this going to be a, in the special to move the money out of a different account, Sandy? I thought, I thought Steve had...
I don't remember that. Um, I remember it was top, but I don't remember. I was just going to look at that.
I, I don't know, I remember going to that Traffic Study Committee, and he said that he thought he had the money in one of the lines for this current year. That's why they said they were going to do it all at once.
Well, let me do this, I'm going to keep, I'm going to keep it on the annual. I'll talk to Steve. If he does have a source that only could be used before June 30th, we'll have a special town meeting article for that. We've done that before, we've had the same article on an annual and special at the same time. So if it's okay with the board, I'll put, leave this here and put it on a special.
Actually, I do have a note that we moved it to the special town meeting, but I don't have...
Okay.
Yeah, I think on the special town meeting.
Okay. Well, let me do both, we can skip over it at the annual. But if it's on the special, we'll deal with it at the special before we deal with the annual anyway. The next article was back, obviously, months ago, the Finance Committee originally had the idea that maybe we need to recodify the zoning bylaws. We got an estimate from Colpman and Page, and I don't know, the Finance Committees, has they recommended, have they...
There's no recommendation on it yet.
Yeah.
Um, they were, so it was $65,000. They said, well, maybe we can do it in phases, and you found out that the $65,000 was full of phase work.
Right.
So I think they were walking at the, at the press. It was such a high cost.
Yeah. If it's okay with the board, what I'll do is, on Monday, the Finance Committee can make a decision, it's their article, even though there's a question mark here, it's their article, and I will ask them, do they want it on the warrant or not?
Fair enough.
Okay. Petition article is a 26 for South Coastal County Legal Services, it's the normal article we get every year for $3,500. For whatever reason, and I, this is why it's in italics, South Shore Resource and Advocacy Center did not send in a petition article. I've gone back through the files a couple of times, I don't remember actually seeing it come through. I, I will check with Barbara Gaynor one more time, but if I don't see anything, I'm deleting that article.
Which one is this one? Is this the law?
No, the, um, South Coastal Legal Services is A-26, that's the legal services. A-27 is the domestic violence.
So the, I know we had this question before, if they, if we don't, this is like a, I don't know what you call it.
Technically, it's a contract between us and them, that they will provide services to the residents of Halifax. If, if we don't provide the appropriation, they don't cut people off.
I would think, whereas we've done it for...
Not years.
For, at least, since I was on the Finance Committee since 2010, I would think the board would just make the recommendation for the 35. I would make that motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll put it on there. A-28, I crossed out, Sandy, this is correct, the Conservation Commission's not going to be looking for that $7,500. It's coming out, it would be coming out of the Wetlands Fund anyway, it's not a raisin' appropriate, but they haven't needed that amount of money, so take it out. 29, we always have an article in there just in case at the end of the night, if there's money that we can put aside to the stabilization fund, I'm not sure that we're going to have that, but by having it, you have that option. So I'm going to leave it in to provide that option to town meeting. Article 30 is for folding chairs for the Selectmen's Meeting Room and the Great Hall, this is from the Administrative School Building Committee. Thirteen, the next one is $13,000 for insulation and vapor barrier in the old section of the Town Barn. Again, this is the building committee's request. 32 is $6,000 for sound reduction panels at the Homes Public Library, that's from the building committee. If I'm correct, Sandy Scott asked for A-33 to be taken out, that was repairing the portico outside here on the second floor of the town hall. A-34, I don't know that he came with a number yet for the fixing the last...
I think $25,000, I'm not sure, that's it, that's accurate.
Okay, no, okay. But that's for repair of the other overhead doors, we repaired, replaced some of them over at the Town Barn, and then we work on all of them. As I mentioned earlier, there is an article, and this is it, for the complete work over at Pope's Tavern in regards to the roof, so repair and replacement includes the architectural engineering, project manager, and construction costs. I know that Steve is still working with the design firm, the engineering firm, to come back with the actual plans and specifications. That's still weeks away, but we'll have the article and be able to appropriate the money if the town, if they're ready to bring something to town meeting.
The amount we put in at 250, it, it's an estimate, at best, it could be quite a bit higher, which then leads us to, can we actually use that? So it's, um...
Yeah, the problem is, given, given our history of the school, especially with the fire suppression system, I'm not sure, I mean, it's going to be up to the Selectmen and the Finance Committee and Building Committee and such, but it'd be perilous to go to town meeting without an actual bid in hand, that was, I mean...
Right.
And we're, we may or may not, we're not going to have one by June 15th, we know that. The question is whether, if the town meetings postponed sufficiently, whether we'll get bids in before that date and be able to bring something to town meeting for a specific amount.
Right. And, but the problem also is, if you put it on the warrant at 250, and now you're looking for 350, 400,000, that's a substantial change, and that article may not be allowed at town meeting because of that substantial change.
We can say a sum of money.
We could say a sum of money. Uh, I, I would be wary about the amount, because right now, we're out paying for the, the architect.
Right.
And then we still have to pay for the construction, so...
Unless the board objects, I'm going to change that to a sum of money, instead of the 250.
Yeah.
The other thing that needs to be looked at is that we possibly would not have enough free cash to cover that article. There was a hundred thousand that was from the repairmen that we had available.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if we do not have enough money in the free cash to cover that article, you need to think about taking it out of stabilization. So that's something that you guys need to philosophically agree on.
Well, it's definitely needed, I mean, the place is leaking, like I said.
How, how much is in stabilization?
Six hundred, something like that.
There's 600 plus 300 something that we put aside for self-lives.
Right.
It's, if it's not, like, it's just over a million, I'm not positive.
We, we can't let the building go, as long as we have it, and, and I don't see a new council on aging anytime soon, so I think it's one of the things we've got to do.
I, I agree, very, very hardly on that.
Following articles, A-36, this is now our annual Lyft/Uber article, that we get a very small amount of money from the state every year from Uber or Lyft or similar service rides that start off here in Halifax. We, unfortunately, under state law, have to have their article every year to appropriate the money for the highway work, separate article from everything else, but that's what that is. A-37, I, I need to go back to the Board of Health, I know that they got an engineering cost, it was like 80,000, Sandy, something like that. Yeah. Um, for repair to the cap landfill. Basically, the, the western edge of it, nearer the trees of the cap landfill, had some erosion problems, and that needs to be fixed. I know that the Board of Health got an engineering report and with an estimate, so I'll get, make sure that that's up to date and make sure the Finance Committee's aware of the amount that's needed. A-38 is from the auditors, in essence, they're, they wanted us to do what's called a fraud risk assessment. Basically, they analyze our procedures of how money moves around in, in town offices, not necessarily literally, though sometimes, but as, what you try and do is list the places where fraud could exist. Do you have sufficient control mechanisms to prevent that fraud from happening? If you don't, then what this does is will recommend changes in how the town operates. I don't have an amount of money, it's a, it was on the list of recommendations from the auditors during the last audit. It's not a mandatory legal requirement, and I don't, you know, given, again, we're strapped and would come from free cash if we spent this, it may be something we just need to put off for another year. I don't know what the board would like to do.
If we don't have this done, what's the ramifications?
They'll, they'll, it will show up as another recommendation again in next year's audit, that's all.
Do you think that we have a problem? Have you seen anything that would indicate any issues?
I have not, but I still think it's, it's a good idea to do, it would give us, make sure that our best practice, you know, we follow best practices. I believe we do. I believe that we can put a system, but it would identify any spots.
I don't disagree with that, I'm just concerned, is this the year to spend the money for?
Right.
So, the next article, if we moved more toward online system, would we have to do the same process over again to have...
No, that'd actually probably be more secure.
So may, maybe, maybe we wait a year?
That's, that's where...
That's a good idea, actually, because if we go into a more online system, we want them to assess the apps and the new system.
Still having to come back a second time around.
This kind of leads into that article concerning the E-permitting, there are so many different systems, and, and they need to be tailored to the individual community, that I don't see it being ready in town for June 15th meeting.
Well, I mean, yeah, and if, if there's not, if we don't have some, a real...
We can pass over.
We can always pass over, and because we may have our meeting in July, or August, or even September, which, but it would still allow us the option, if we're ready to go and appropriate money.
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
So I would make a motion to remove A-38.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
So, A-39 is, as you are mentioning, the E-permitting, we'll leave that on. If we don't have a proposal to bring to town meeting, then the board can ask that it be passed over.
Can, could I just make a recommendation on that?
Yeah.
That if somebody comes into the building to pull a permit, that we have some sort of system here, that we can walk them through using it, versus saying, oh, it's online, just go...
Yeah, I think, well, that, that's why I would mention the hardware, that could include a kiosk, for instance.
Okay, all right, good.
You can actually have a tutorial on, on the, if we're going to have, for instance, I, I'm only because I'm more familiar with building part, which is where more permits come in than anything else, you can actually have a monitor and give you a little tutorial on as to how to fill it up. My only issue in the past, I don't want to take this now, but that's a new one.
40 is for a document management system. Again, we're looking at the situation that it's more cumbersome trying to get paper documents from town offices, because obviously, we're closed, at least for right now. The idea being that in the long run, we can get everything filed electronically, people will be able to pull and get copies of those documents without having to contact a town official. I don't have limits on it, in the sense of, again, it's a situation like with the E-permitting. Conceptually, we understand what we're talking about, we'd have to have a firm proposal we'd go to town meeting with.
I, I would just recommend you, you add the, where you have, including not limited to hardware, software, for that.
Sure.
Because if we're going to scan documents here, just like the plans, we're going to new, need a new scanner.
Well, probably don't, not, the two large copy machines here are very, very good.
But I don't think they're big enough to copy, like the site plans.
Well, yeah, the site plans are going to be a different thing, you're right.
Yeah, that, that was just my...
Well, if you, it gets more involved, if you're going to do that, you have to have a plotter, so that you can actually print them, or send them off in PDFs, and that's what you want to do.
Yeah, make it so they can have a PDF copy of it.
So we're going to leave that with Gordon's suggestion included. 41 is electronic payroll system, I talked to Sandy, we're still working a few decades behind with postcard payrolls, and we need to get it up to date. Again, unless we have something to bring to town meeting, this article will be passed over. But it would reduce the amount of paperwork involved with all the offices, getting, filling it out at their end, having it be delivered to the accounting office and the treasurer's office, having everybody review it, pieces of paper, re-typing stuff in, once they did, it'll all be handled electronically. F-1, this is from the board, but obviously, assessors are still working with town council about a possible pilot agreement for the River Street Solar Farm. It's not resolved by any stretch yet, but what this does is provide the option that if everybody agrees to a pilot, that, and we get to town meeting, that town meeting will be able to approve it. Any pilot does have to be approved at town meeting for it to be effective.
And we don't have an agreement by the time town meeting come to pass it over.
Correct. Okay, R-1 was, as I mentioned earlier, this was an article to accept Pasture Lane. I would take it from the board that I should take this out.
At this point...
We left the other one in, right? We left that in, just to give notice, so I, I would do the same on this, this one?
No, we, we left on the, to accept, the vote on...
I would let you accept, because even if the roadwork is, then the engineer has to provide...
The ass builds.
Yeah, the ass... Yeah, the S-belt is on the road, so there'd be a good amount of work, there's a good amount of work to get this street accepted, so it would never be ready if we voted to fund the, the-
Okay, I thought we agreed earlier to leave it on the fact that, to accept the road first, before we talk about putting money into it.
Yeah, didn't you say that, Joe?
No, we cannot spend money on that road, except for like filling a pothole, until we accept it. Once we accept it, we can spend the larger amount of money, but the acceptance has to happen first.
To Troy's point, though, if we're gonna appropriate the money-
But how do we accept it, and we have certain-
No, I understand.
-regulations that we have to meet to accept it, and I don't, in the past, we had John Lane Drive, the people wanted it accepted, and we told them that we could not accept it unless they had an engineer to do the S-belt and everything. Not even sure how that ended, but they may have actually done it, it was only a two or three house road, right? So I don't, that's, that's my concern with accepting the road.
I would leave it in there for now, so we can have this discussion at town meeting, where it's stuck.
We did that with Autumn Lane, we brought Autumn Lane to town meeting to finish it, and it was, it was holding down at town meeting, but they ended up going back to develop and getting it completed, I believe.
No, the reason I have Autumn Lane on this is simply, I was hoping maybe it would be, yeah, it's right, it's the next, I know you don't have the most recent, but I put it on there because I didn't know whether we, we're not done, let's put it that way. I, 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 we haven't done, we haven't had the engineer go out there and take a last look or anything, so R-2 is Autumn Lane, I'm gonna ask the board to take that off, but I don't know what you wanna do about pasture lane.
You know, if we go ahead and accept it, we've now precluded having to get everything else done. So maybe what we do is, we left the first article on, we take this article off, we can always then go back and put it on if we have a special, or even next year, if we've got the money available, we can work out the details. It may cause more of a problem if, in fact, if we're, the $160,000 were to pass, there may be that momentum to pass the acceptance, and then we've avoided the whole step. So I understand your concern, and it's a little convoluted and confusing, but I think we're better off taking it off, just thought.
Is there a motion?
I'll move we take it off.
Lloyd?
And we can always put it back in if we get the approval, once we've worked out the details of who's doing what.
I'll second that. Call in favor?
Aye.
Just as far as I have on my notes, A-19, which was the 160, is still on here.
Yeah.
Let's see, article B-1 is for taking us out of civil service. It's a simple legislation that would be needed, obviously, there still needs to be negotiated with the unions to be effective, but if we, you know, we only have so many town meetings a year, so in terms of trying to handle the logistics and getting up to state legislature, this is the time to do it. I would certainly tell the unions we're doing this, but, and tell them very specifically, we understand that civil service cannot end until it's negotiated out of the contracts. The rest of this stuff here, zoning, I think the, B-2, which was about making a finding, that's out. The sump pump diameter, I don't even remember, I had a stray note, and I not found any reason, so that's out. Decommissioning solar fields is out, mostly because I know there are bylaws I could find, but I'm not ready. Leave the stormwater one in there, I've got to get something to done in the next week, but we're under the gun with the EPA. This isn't floodplain, this is stormwater, that we need to put in the rest of the bylaw, the first part was done last year. B-6 is the first of the three zoning articles that are coming before the planning board. One is on floodplain, basically updating the maps and some of the text to reflect what FEMA wants us to do. Then, after that, is the multifamily bylaw, the revisions have been worked on by those group of town officials and residents. That was submitted to the planning board, and then after that, and several pages, obviously, I'm not sure if I put page numbers on this. The last is the, sorry, marijuana establishment, allowing it by special permit for, recreational marijuana establishment, allowing it by special permit in the business or commercial district. That's a petition article, that's also before the planning board. In terms of other bylaws, the beautification committee did ask to increase their membership from five to seven, since it's a bylaw, it has to go to town meeting. The board asked for B-7, which is to do with the taxation of solar fields, basically to put pressure on the legislature to accomplish something more statewide, and that's what I've got outside of the election article. So the timetable right now is the finance committee's meeting on Monday, we'll get, you know, there'll be articles that they may very well put finance committee recommendation at town meeting, but that'll be the last, whenever they're done by Monday night, that's what's going into the printed copy that warrant on Thursday. Thursday is our projected date for getting it sent in, it will be mailed out a few weeks after that, with the June 15th date. Obviously, I'll be staying in touch with the board selectman, with the town moderator, with the town clerk, the finance committee, anybody else I need to talk with, as we get closer to June 15th, and whether it's practical, both in terms of the finances, in terms of logistics, to hold the meeting on June 15th. Town meetings are not under the gatherings of ten law, or directed from the governor. He had specifically not included what are called legislative bodies of cities and towns. I suspect what he was really thinking about were city and town councils, so that they could, if they had a big enough room, for instance, they could do, maintain social distancing, they could still have meetings, even if they had more than 10 people in that room. Town meeting and maintain social distancing might require us to use both the multipurpose room and the gym, depending on how many people showed up, because we know we get, let's say, 150 people in the multipurpose room, I think it's not possible to keep the distancing and get 150 people in there. But either the gym, or the gym plus the multipurpose room, but then that goes into making sure, you know, we have counters and everybody else, and there's communication between rooms. The other possibility I need to reach out to Silver Lake about is to see whether the auditorium can be used. There's legislation right now, I think it's passed the Senate, it's now at the House, that would allow cities and towns to have their town, their meetings outside of the boundaries of the community, so that if it was practical for Silver Lake, and I understand there are plenty of logistical problems there, not just you, you know, setting up the room, but using the room, you know, do we bring in Scott and his fogging team, for instance, to delouse the place before and after the meeting, as an example? But that might be a possibility also, it would be easier, not in terms of geography, but easier in terms of actually running the meeting by having everybody in one room. So, as we get closer to the date, we're still about a month off, I'll continue discussions with the board and everybody else, and see whether, because the other part of it, obviously, is, if we don't have the state aid numbers, and we're certain about those state aid numbers, there's no point in having the town meeting on June 15th. We'll do what's called a 112 budget, and submit that up to Boston, and then eventually, at some point, we'll have a town meeting, once we know what the financial situation actually is. I don't know if there's anything else the board wanted to discuss at this time?
I don't think so.
Not that I'm aware of.
Do you want a motion, Mr. Jerr?
So, just on the, the idea that I had last year about that adult field day, I think we need to, once we get through this, come up with some idea to have something to celebrate getting through, whether it's a year and a half from now or not, something once this ends, so I don't have any real proposal at this point in time, but just something that we should think about for a long term.
Halifax Pride Day.
Something.
Halifax used to have a little town day?
Yeah.
That's in the, on the history books.
Yeah.
We would be up to, and I think it's right around July 4th, I think we were scavenging a lot.
Well, and it was, yeah, it was basically, or Halifax and the, what do you call it, the summer holiday festival was always connected to that, yeah.
Right, so that makes something that-
I don't see that happening this year, or?
No.
Not this year?
Not this year, obviously.
We'll be lucky to do holidays in Halifax, unfortunately.
Okay, is that motion adjourned?
I'll make the motion.
Second. Call in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and again, apologies for the audio quality and such, we will, it is being filmed for YouTube, it will get up on Area 58 later, next week, I hope, thank you.